It's a privilege.
All right, Mr. Manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Tonight's work session is following our themes of Housing, Education, and Public Safety. Tonight is education. And I'm going to take, come back in a moment and make a couple of quick introductions of some new key staff members. And then I'm going to ask Susan Perry to step up, and she's going to introduce some guests from the Hampton Roads Community Foundation who are with the Minus Nine to Five Initiative that the Community Foundation is putting together, early care education program that is really focused on everything from prenatal care right through kindergarten. So I think it's a good presentation and one that you all will enjoy, and she'll introduce Linda Rice and Jane Glasgow for us. We've bumped Michael Paris a time or two to talk about the Norfolk Works Program, but one of the things that I think this council has said loud and clearly over the last few, several months and years is that as we do these significant development projects, we want to make sure that Norfolk residents have an opportunity to get the jobs that are generated. And I think we've had some really good success doing that. Michael, working with a lot of folks in the organization, including Susan Perry, has done some fun things, and we want you to get an update on what that looks like, and I think you'll enjoy that as well. After Michael's presentation, I don't think you all have had Peter Burke make a presentation yet, but Peter from the Strategic Budget Strategic Planning Office is doing a great job for us and is going to staff the Lifelong Learning Commission. So he's going to stand up and give you a presentation of what we think that looks like and what that process is and what the milestones will be, really a follow-up to the March 28th meeting that we had here when y'all started to flesh that out. And then finally, Steve Hawks will step up and give an update on the Ready to Thrive program that was so successful last year. So that's the agenda. First thing I'd like to do is make a couple of fun introductions. And we have a new Intergovernmental Relations Officer that will be familiar to many of you, Ivana Bellamy. Ivana, I think many of you know, but 10 years as Legislative Assistant, so good experience in the General Assembly, has a tremendous network of contacts, and most recently has been working in James Rogers Shop and did a great job for him and has got a keen sense of the state budget, has set up town hall meetings, and we're thrilled to have Ivana here. She has a degree in sociology from Norfolk State University and will be somebody that you all see a great deal of, particularly when the General Assembly is in session. So I just wanted you to have a chance to see Ivana and welcome her team. Joining Ivana will be Captain Doug Beaver. And many of you all know Doug as the former commanding officer at Norfolk Naval Station, has joined us on Monday as our new military affairs liaison. And Doug has obviously got a tremendous 25-year career in the Navy, was frankly instrumental in setting up the Centennial Commission for us, has already been working with Team Norfolk in a significant way, and we're awfully pleased to have him join the team and want you to see him and welcome Doug as well. And then just because Chuck snuck one in on me, we have a new Business Development Manager in the Economic Development Office, Mr. Shawn Washington, has joined us as well. And just since Shawn is here, I wanted you to have a chance to see and meet Shawn as well. All right, so we, I got to tell you, it is, there are a lot of people that want to work for Team Norfolk, so it's been fun, and we had a chance to really select these folks out of some very keen competition, and we're glad to have them on the team and look forward to working with them. So with that said, I'll ask Susan Perry to come up and introduce the Minus Nine to Five Initiative with the Hampton Roads Community Foundation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's really my pleasure to introduce to you a presentation by the Hampton Roads Community Foundation with their new initiative called Minus Nine to Five. This initiative really seeks to build high-quality early childhood education system focusing really on the whole child from prenatal through kindergarten. And with this council's focus on education, we really wanted you to be aware of this good work happening in our region around early childhood education. So with us today is Dr. Linda Rice, who's the Vice President for Grant Making with the Hampton Roads Community Foundation. Prior to joining the foundation, she was the Provost for the Chesapeake Campus of the Tidewater Community College. She also served as a member of the Norfolk Poverty Commission, as a member of our Workforce Development Work Group. And she's really been an active participant in the implementation of this work, both in workforce development and neighborhood revitalization and support. With Dr. Rice is Dr. Jane Glasgow, who's the Executive Director of the Minus Nine to Five. She has had an extensive career in early childhood development and has really been responsible for coordinating this effort across the various teams on a regional level. So I think you'll really enjoy this presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Linda Rice.
Mayor and members of council, thank you for having Dr. Jane Glasgow and me with you tonight. In 2015, after reviewing a number of issues in the community, the Hampton Roads Community Foundation determined that early care and education was an area we would explore for our Collective Impact Initiative. Prior to embarking on the initiative, a feasibility was, a study was conducted interviewing over 100 individuals, 50 of which were parents, very important to the study. From the study, it was clear that this type of initiative was important. There was an appetite from parents, early care professionals, and others in the region. So in 2016, in July, the foundation began the initiative Minus Nine to Five with the employment of Dr. Jane Glasgow. Since that time, Jane has employed the best practices of collective impact and has gathered over 100 stakeholders from 80 organizations across the region to build a bottom-up process that focuses on improving the system of early care and education. I'm pleased to introduce to you Dr. Jane Glasgow. Jane has over 30 years' experience in early care and education, and she is very passionate about making the lives of children and families in our region better through Nine to Five, Minus Nine to Five. Jane?
Thank you. Boy, that was quite an introduction. Thank you very much, Mayor and members of council, for the invitation to come and talk about one of my favorite subjects, children and families. So as Dr. Rice stated, Minus Nine to Five was started last year as a collective impact initiative, and that's a term that we hear frequently. A lot of people know, use the term collective impact. And really what I think is important to remember about collective impact is the fact that this is really a community-led, bottom-up initiative. So rather than me coming in as Executive Director and saying, here's what our agenda is going to be, it's really bottom-up. As Dr. Rice mentioned, we have 100, about 100 stakeholders, a few more than that, and about 80 organizations that are represented across the whole initiative. And we're really focused on preparing families from conception to the time their children enter kindergarten. And we know that it's so critical to, as we think about children, being ready for school and entering school in a way that we know that is going to set them up for success, that we really have to acknowledge that that happens long before they're even born, that access to prenatal care, access to family supports are all critical. And so our initiative really is focusing, starting at conception all the way to kindergarten, focusing on kindergarten readiness and all the pieces in between. When we talk about the early care and education system, it's a little confusing, but really the way that I want you to think about it is that the system is any part of the community, the organizations within the community that touch families from the time they find out that they're pregnant until the time that their child enters public school or traditional kindergarten. So that's what our initiative is really about, hence the Minus Nine to Five. Sometimes people have to think for a minute about what that really means. So our initiative focuses, as Ms. Perry mentioned, is a regional effort and focuses on the five cities of Norfolk, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach. It's about aligning a lot of what is happening in each of those cities so that we make things more easy, more easily accessible for families. Our initiative is really not about a program or starting something new. Our initiative is about building connections, building deeper connections, and aligning programs and services across the community. And so in a few minutes, I'm going to share with you a couple of the initiatives that are, a couple of the action plans that the initiative is working on, and I think that that will help to clear, to clarify what we are doing. Really, some of the key tenants are that we are increasing communication and understanding across the five cities, helping folks to understand what other organizations are doing, where they can make connections. There's many, each city has different protocols and different sets of programs, but how can we work together to align those in the best way that we can while keeping our city things the way that they should be, but also keeping our, or developing a regional approach? So our vision for Minus Nine to Five is really quite simple, that each family in Hampton Roads will be equipped and supported to raise children who are healthy, thriving, and ready to learn. So as you can see, this initiative is different potentially than many things that go on in our community. A lot of times, we think about getting children ready for school as kind of an academic thing or just cognitive development, and we don't necessarily connect the health aspect of that with the family aspect and the academic aspect. So we're really focusing on making sure that children are healthy, thriving, and ready to learn, and that our community surrounds families in making that happen. So in addition to our vision, which was developed by our steering committee, which I will share with you a little bit about that in a few minutes, we also have goals for early care and education system of what that should look like, guiding principles about the way that we'll work together. The initiative really focuses, again, on cross-sector working groups of people, so it's not just education folks, or not just health folks, or not just human services folks, but really bringing together people from different sectors to work across these, these issues. Sometimes that really can be more difficult because we tend to work in our own silos and in our own approach. And so one of our guiding principles is really focusing on debate and dialogue, trusting, developing trusting relationships enough to be able to converse with people and share those, ask those hard questions and share those pieces. Another one of our key tenants is family voice. My background is in family engagement and working with families and parents, and so one of the other key pieces to our initiative is that we have opportunities for parents within the communities to share input and to really be part of the solution and help, help build the system that's going to serve them, as opposed to us coming in and saying, this is what we think you need. So we are looking at our, the outcomes that we are seeking to change. We have nine metrics that we're looking at. This is a long-term, because it's systems building, it's not a programmatic approach, so it's not that we're going to do this, and then this is going to happen, which is going to change this. So our measures are really on a longer term. We will begin in 2022 using five years to really look at changing these outcomes for children and families. So the arrows really indicate what things we want to increase, and the down arrows are things that we want to decrease. And we know in our community that we want to increase the mothers who are receiving early prenatal care, decreasing the number of babies born at a low birth weight, decreasing the infant mortality rate, increasing the number of children receiving immunizations on schedule, increasing the children with a family medical home, increase families participating in home visiting, increasing children receiving developmental screenings, and increase children meeting the kindergarten pals fall benchmarks, and reducing the number of children that are retained in kindergarten. This is just a quick snapshot of the measures that we're using. We have much more in-depth data that looks at city by city. We've disaggregated all of this, and we're really looking to make an impact, not just in aggregate, but looking at numbers for individual groups and individual cities so that we ensure that we're helping all of our families and not just some of our families. The structure of our initiative, just wanted to kind of explain a little bit. So as I mentioned earlier, the Steering Committee is kind of the lead organization. We have 24 members of our Steering Committee, and I have a slide that I'll share that information with you as well. The Steering Committee's role is to lead and guide the initiative to help, help set the strategic direction of the initiative. And the Steering Committee developed our goals, our vision, our guiding principles, and helped with our shared metrics. Then we have a set of six working groups, and hence that's where the bulk of our 100 folks that are involved are. We have 15 to 20 people, again, cross-sector organizations, cross-sector business, cross-sector business structures, as well as cross-city, representing each of the six working groups. So again, focusing on health, the family support that they need to have children who are healthy, thriving, and ready to learn, early learning and development, all types of early education programs, whether it be in the home, with parents, a family day home, a licensed childcare, or a pre-K program. We also have a working group on community connections on, that focuses on how the community stands up around helping families with these. And we have a data and knowledge-sharing work group, which focuses on helping us make sure that we are focused on data and using that as a basis for all of the decisions that we are making. A few of our action priorities, and we have about 14 action plans that we are working on right now. Some of them are short-term, some of them are longer-term, and I just wanted to share a couple of those with you. One of the first things that we are working on is a regional unified infant safe sleep effort. You may or may not be aware that the Norfolk area, Southampton Roads, has a very high infant mortality rate, many of those based on unsafe sleep practices. And so in an effort to really focus on that, we have convened a group of all of the health directors from the five cities and human services folks from the five cities. We've been working with hospital systems, and we have now convened a Safe Sleep Advisory Committee that will begin to shape what our regional effort will look like. So that hopefully will be something you'll be seeing soon, but again, a really good example of systems building. We know that there are many, eight, nine, 10, different safe sleep education programs going on, whether it's at pediatricians, whether it's through Department of Human Services or Social Services, different hospitals. But what we're doing is pulling all those together to pull some common threads together and strengthen that as a program, as one program, as opposed to if you go to this hospital and deliver in this hospital, or if you are, live in this city, or go to this doctor, or this pediatrician, or get this service, you may be getting different messages. And so we want to make sure that all families are getting the same information. Another one of our priorities is looking at Kids Priority One, which is a web-based research resource guide for families. And we're working on connecting organizations within the five regions to make sure that they have information in there, and then helping for organizations that need to help parents find access to resources that they're doing that. So in addition, we're looking at a shared services model for childcare. We know that access to affordable childcare is a struggle for many of our families, and so looking at ways that we can support the early care and education business model, both focusing on quality and the business model itself is an important piece, and so we're looking at a shared services model. And then the last example I want to share with you is a pathway through pregnancy. Really, our Healthy Homes, Healthy Children group is working on developing a roadmap, if you will, of once, once a mother gets pregnant, what are the steps, what does she need to do, how does she access prenatal care? If she has insurance, what might she do? If she doesn't have insurance, what other pieces of the, of the, of the map are important to follow? So those are just a few of the actions that we're working on, many other in the hopper as well. I did want to share the names of our Steering Committee members with you. We have representation from all five cities in different areas, from business to education to human services, health and medical. We have nonprofits. And so in each of our working groups as well, we have representation from each of the cities. And just again, wanted to give you a little Snapchat, Snap, Snap, sorry, snapshot of our partners, a few of them that are working with us as well. Thank you very much. I hope that that gave you a little snapshot of what we're doing with Minus Nine to Five, and would be happy to answer any questions that you may have at any time.
This is terrific and very ambitious. You know, I'm always frustrated that everybody's trying to do the same thing in their own little silo, and nobody's talking to each other. So to that effort, I think you're doing a fabulous job of trying to get that together. I'm sorry, I can't divorce what I do for a living. And some of your goals might be a little ambitious, might be maybe discreet, you know, for instance, reducing preterm delivery. I mean, that has been studied for 50 years by obstetricians all over the world, and there aren't answers out there. And so maybe using that as one of your goals or guidelines, especially without the benefit of people on your committee that I can see that are related to that kind of?
We actually do. Our Healthy Homes, Healthy Children Committee is, we have folks from EVMS, from the Department of Pediatrics, we have folks-
Right, but I'm talking about the centric here.
Yes.
So I just, I guess what I'm saying is, there's, there have never been any variables that have determined really who's going to deliver preterm, who's going to deliver below weight. And so maybe your goals, and I frankly feel that when you're starting to look at this at conception, you're way too late. You know, I mean, you really are. And again, sadly, prenatal care hasn't even been shown to be a variable that improves caring in many, in most cases. So I guess I'd like you to bite off some things that you, I mean, I love the stuff about the sleep. I love the stuff about identifying families in the postpartum, as soon as the baby is born, as these are the families we need to work with. But I just am a little worried, and maybe I'm in an area that you guys don't want to hear about.
No, no, we actually, and I will say that one of our guiding principles is that we really encourage debate and dialogue. And so, you know, we want to discuss the questions that, that are hard to answer. And I will say, so some of the other things that we're focusing on, we've been talking a lot about universal screening, but ideally, we'd like to back up on universal screening at birth when children are, in the hospital are delivered, and the screenings that happen with moms. We would really like to back up and find a way to begin to implement prenatal and work with the OBs and-
I mean, that, this is where your money is.
Right, and we are talking about, we have action plans around those.
But don't set up as a goal that you're going to achieve things that nobody thus far has been able to, do you know what I mean?
Right, our, our goal is to reduce that, and our, we have goals and identified goals, metrics that we're looking at as far as, target metrics, I'm sorry. And so they're very small for some of those areas, knowing that there are many things that we, that we are not able to impact, but looking at the things we can impact, if it's that we can focus on prenatal care, nutrition services, other family support services-
Access to care is huge.
Right. And we know that through the data that we've looked at, that that's, there's big variations in access to care.
Okay, I'm sorry to get to-
That's okay.
If you can figure this out, you're up for the Nobel Prize.
So when you, Dr. Rice, you mentioned the committees, and you listed the people-
You go back.
And you listed the various people representing the Steering Committee members. Where, where do the people who your goal and vision is to serve, where do they fit in all of this? Where is their impact put? Or did you just use them, 100 people, you said?
Right, that was for the feasibility, feasibility study.
So from the study, and your bottom-up, I heard you say that, which is good. How do the people that you're going to serve fit into the bigger picture, other than the study part?
Great question. So we are really excited to have actually a resident from one of the Norfolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority areas to come and sit on our Steering Committee. We're, we're working on getting a couple of others. We had two other parents that were on our Steering Committee that, for various reasons, had to step off, so we are replacing those folks as well. We are also working with various organizations throughout the community to meet with parents and do focus groups, invite them in to be a part of working groups, and, and then also the focus groups to gather information, to share with them what we're doing, and get their input and thoughts on that as well. So we kind of at all the levels, at the Steering Committee level, at the working group level, and then kind of as a whole, looking at, at bringing them together in focus groups. Thank you very much.
Right, Glasgow, thank you so much. Next, we're going to hear from Michael Paris with the Department of Development. You know, we launched, as I said earlier, Norfolk Works in December of 16, and I think we've got a good story to tell, and I know this has been a high priority for councils. Michael?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council, for having me. It's an honor to be able to present to you this evening. Before we begin, I also want to thank City Council for advocating for this project, and to the many members of Team Norfolk who helped make it a reality long before I even came on board. So let's begin. So what is Norfolk Works? Simply put, and launched in December 2016, Norfolk Works is the workforce development arm of Norfolk Economic Development. Our mission is to champion the recruitment of diverse Norfolk talent to support business retention and expansion, to align economic and workforce development efforts to support new business development, and in collaboration with our workforce partners, help Norfolk citizens prepare for and connect to meaningful employment opportunities. We have three key components. First is our Job Resource Center, which is at 100 Bank Street. Second, we offer services to businesses through economic development in the areas of recruiting, training, and hiring incentives. And finally, we have an inter-agency group called the Norfolk Workforce Investment Network that we're pulling together, that's an inter-agency group. We have partners from the universities, from the human services, from Job Corps, from a number of partners within the city to help serve the needs of both the businesses and the residents looking to come into these employment opportunities and potentially get training if there's a skills gap. So a shot of our Norfolk Work Center from an event we had in, over the winter. The Job Resource Center is Norfolk's flagship career access network site, and what a CAN site basically is, is something that links us into our Regional Workforce Investment Board, which is Opportunity, Inc. So folks can come into the center, they can get registered to Opportunity, Inc. with Virginia Employment Commission, they can find out if they're, have access to low or no-cost training, among other things. We also offer job readiness services and connections to employers. We have events with employers, both onsite and offsite. In addition to the employment events, we have job clubs and a variety of workshops. We have a number of different programs that come in and do job clubs, from the Department of Blind and Vision Impaired, to the Virginia Department of Social Services is looking to start a workshop, and Second Chances also does a workshop onsite as well. We also partner with United Ways, Mission United Programs to support veterans and transitioning military. So the center utilization has gone up pretty steadily through the months. April, you see a little bit of a drop. We're excluding the 600 people that came that month for Wireside Hiring Week, which we'll talk a little bit more about in just a moment. We sponsored nine employment events thus far. These are kind of the attendance to the events. The first event that we did was Wireside Open House, and that's kind of what sparked the initiative in terms of working with the various workforce, community partners and residents. We partnered with 13 different partners within the community. Everything from human services to Union Mission was a part of this initiative. We had a unique referral ticket system where the workforce partners could give a referral ticket to a job seeker who had completed a soft skills training program, and they could bring that ticket with them to the event for some additional consideration. And Economic Development Norfolk Works was able to negotiate- And Economic Development Norfolk Works was able to negotiate with the employer that they would give them that additional consideration. And they saw 826 people that day. In December, we took a break. January, we did a employment event, hiring event for Paramount Sleep, a longtime furnace manufacturer. We partnered with Virginia Employment Commission and Opportunity Inc. on this event. They're hiring for about 10 positions. In February, we did another event for a small employer, Sorrentini Mariani, which is another longtime Norfolk business and furniture manufacturer, has been a great partner for the workforce development community. They're looking for about 10, 15 positions, they interviewed 32 people. So, we wanted to make sure the initiative wasn't just about large businesses, but also address the small, the needs of the small business community as well. In March, we did three events. The first was Lidl, which is a German grocery store chain, they're paying approximately $12 per hour. And we partnered with NRHA on that particular event. We also did a job fair with NRHA that month, and we did an employability event, which focused on persons with disabilities with Waterside, and that was in partnership with the Department of Blind and Vision Impaired and the Department of Aging and Real Potato Services. In April, we did our signature event at the center, which was Waterside Hiring Week. It was a week-long event in the beginning of April, and we'll kind of dive into that a little bit more in just a moment. And we also did an event with Simon Norfolk Premium Outlets in partnership with Norfolk State University at Norfolk State Student Center, which saw a little over 2,300 people. So, what are some job seekers saying? I pulled this one comment, it's kind of indicative of a lot of comments that we've gotten, that they really get a lot of help with their, their job search project. It's not that we place them immediately into employment, but we're helping them make those connections to the hiring events, to the employers they're hiring. We're going to work with them and wherever, meet them where they're at, get them connected with whatever program they need to be connected to, and offer them some services directly at the center as well, as far as resume writing, online applications, and connections to those training programs. What are some of the partners saying? Reverend Crowley, the Men's Shelter Administrator for Union Mission Ministry, talked about how 35 individuals were able to secure employment from the men's shelter through Waterside Hiring Week. And again, we use that referral system as well. And the initiative really helped, works with the, in partnership with our partners like Union Mission. In this case, Union Mission did a prep event at the shelter where they helped get the men's IDs, clothing, and training ahead of the event, and we did this in collaboration. So, it's really a testament to the great work they did preparing the residents for this opportunity. Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, they partnered with us a number of events. They were a huge partner on the Lidl interview series. Eight residents ended up securing employment with Lidl, and many more with Waterside and also with the Simon Norfolk Premium Outlets. And a lot of the partners tell us that the partnership with Norfolk Works and Economic Development provides them some access that maybe they wouldn't otherwise get. I can tell you, you know, my, in my former positions with Norfolk View Program, with Second Chances, with Norfolk Rancher Program, it was very difficult to get a hold of some of these large employers. So, having that intermediary with Economic Development, I think makes a difference and helps our Norfolk businesses learn about these diverse sources of talent that they may not always be, not know about, but they can very much benefit from. Some preliminary outcomes from the initiative, we received over 1,500 visits at the Resource Center thus far. We sponsored nine employment events serving about 4,000 job seekers, coordinated 15 of the workforce development partners, and we supported a little over 700 hires in Norfolk businesses. Approximately 500 of those are Norfolk residents. Talk about a couple of the events that we did. Waterside Hiring Week, they interviewed 600 people during the week. Their, Waterside reported they hired 229 of those and 167 approximately were Norfolk residents, about 73% of the hires. And this is the numbers, of course, that we want to see, that a lot of Norfolk residents were being connected with the opportunity. We find that by connecting Norfolk-based workforce programs and using strategically strong locations influences the percentage of Norfolk residents that ultimately end up in these occupations and end up landing the jobs. 145 attendees mentioned that they're referred by Norfolk-based programs. Again, really highlights the partnerships with the workforce development community. One job seeker at Waterside Hiring Week mentioned that it was a great experience, that kind of opened their eyes to the big goal that Norfolk had in mind, and they're excited to see the changes. And, you know, we're excited about it too, and we thought it was a great event. Some businesses have kind of given some feedback. Zed Smith of The Quarters Company said that the initiative was really helpful in providing a direct conduit of individuals in need of employment. Sorrentini Mariani, Adrian Person, the Human Resources Manager there, mentioned that after doing the hiring event they did in the winter, that they, it got them the Norfolk talent they needed when they needed it, helping meet their customers' deadlines and helping their business grow. And that, we don't want businesses not to be able to expand because they have a recruiting challenge, or businesses to fail because they have a workforce challenge. These are problems that we think that we can solve, and we can solve them with Norfolk talent. Couple of recent projects that we participated on. First one I want to talk about is the Pathway to Prosperity Training and Job Fair. This was a grassroots effort from the Norfolk Passers Coalition and Norfolk Poverty Reduction Initiative. And Norfolk Works is more in a supporting role on this particular event, and we're really happy to partner with the Passers Coalition. In addition to the city and the Passers Coalition, Norfolk Redevelopment Housing Authority, Opportunity Inc., Virginia Employment Commission, and a number of community partners came together. And it was really unique in the sense that there was some training programs, some training, soft skills training that we did ahead of the event. We did four events across the city at the community centers, at the Southside Aquatic Center, and some churches that focused on how to navigate a job fair, employability, to get the residents ready for employment. And the folks that went through that training were able to get a special ID, a passport, which we in turn talked to the employers about to get them some additional consideration at the event. The event itself, on June 1st, saw over 75 employers and over approximately 600 job seekers were brought together. And again, really a grassroots effort from the Norfolk Passers Coalition. And really hats off to them for organizing this, along with the many partners that were involved. Another project that we were on, again, this is the largest event that we've done, was the Simon Norfolk Premium Outlets Job Fair. We partnered with Norfolk State University on this project. The event was held at the Norfolk Student Center. If you haven't been, it's a really great facility. And we saw over 2,300 job seekers at that event. It was an awesome turnout. Approximately 60% of the folks that attended were Norfolk residents. 471 people that came reported they received a job offer, and about 300 of those were Norfolk residents. It says the job fair was kind of masquerading as a hiring event. Simon was, each one of these outlets were, needed to hire their entire store. So, it wasn't like a typical job fair where you might have two or four openings. They had 30 openings or so each. So, really a great event. And as we kind of conclude this evening, sort of talked a lot about a lot of numbers and a lot of different partners, but I want to tell you about one special Norfolk resident. This is Ms. Angela Cobb. We partnered with AARP, their Community Service Employment Program, to provide work experience at the center. Ms. Angela Cobb, she was amazing, she really helped with a lot of things that you saw tonight. And she, I'm really proud to say that she was actually hired by Team Norfolk last month. She was hired by the Department of Human Services and the Adult Protective Services Unit. She's doing a great job there, and I just want to thank her publicly for everything that she did. And that's all I have for you this evening, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, Mr. Johnson and Mrs. Smigal.
Okay, Mr. Paris and to my colleagues on council, I would just like to say thank you so very much to, for having the initiative to be bold, to be brave, and take a chance, and realizing that the gap that we were seeing here in Norfolk, it wasn't that we did not have the jobs here in Norfolk, although we're bringing more jobs. It was that we needed to train our residents, our citizens here in Norfolk, so that they could have the skills to be able to go and get those jobs. So, I just wanted to say thank you so very much. A special thank you to Team Norfolk for your hard work and being boots on the ground for making this happen. Mr. Manager, thank you as well. And the Passers Coalition Job Fair, that was just fantastic. Movement Mortgage was one of the, the business that was there, and they had lines all day long. I mean, it was just lines and lines of people being there. But the Passers Coalition Job Fair turned out to be a great event down in scope, and spending time with the people there and just talking to them. And they were really pleased to be able to come down to see something like this, to say that Norfolk does care about their residents. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Smigal?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful program, and I like seeing the number of 72%?
Right.
73 of Norfolk residents. I would like for us to plan on following up and seeing how many of the, those employed stayed in that job. Just to get data, I think we need to see that data, particularly those that are coming out of shelters and other houses, how that has changed their lives, if they've stayed in that job for over a year. I think those would be helpful for measures on the success of this. I do have one small suggestion, not to sound critical. All of the events are very one-sided of the city. And we have federal HUD zones throughout the city, including in Ocean View and Wards Corner area, that it makes it difficult for people to get to things that are downtown or even at Norfolk State. And I think that we need to do a better job pushing that in other places. The Workforce Development Center at Wards Corner would be a great location to do some events. I know one of the events was scheduled on the St. Patrick's Day Parade Day, one of the first ones, and that's like a huge event for Norfolk that maybe people would have gone to. And I did hear complaints from senior citizens not knowing about this as much, and especially the Simon outlet job opportunities, and getting some of our seniors working that are still at that poverty level. So, they're not social media savvy, and a lot of these, the ways that this was advertised with social media, it may mean that we are making physical visits to like the senior centers in Norfolk, and we're having physical flyers and things like that being handed out to advertise and make sure that this, that we're having this accessible to every one of Norfolk's citizens, not just on one side of the city, so.
And so, Councilman Smigal, let me touch on both of those things. So, as far as the senior citizens, you are correct that they are, some of them may not be into the iPads and everything. So, it means that you're the boots-on-the-ground type attitude, attending civile meetings, which we've, I've already started to address, to let the senior citizens know that here's what your city is doing. And some of them are very interested in getting jobs.
Sure.
Although they are senior citizens, they are very excited about Norfolk Works, and you're absolutely right, attending the civile meetings and letting them know. And one of the things we did say that we were going to address, that we have to do a better job of communication, how we send communication out to our residents. It doesn't always mean that it has to be online.
Right.
The second one, what I consider as hubs throughout the city, that expands Norfolk Works, Five Points, some of the residents talking that they would like to have something like this within their community to address five other different, five to 10 other different communities surrounding the Five Points area. And they want it to come into Five Points, so that there is something on the other side. So, we have something for Norfolk Works downtown, possibly the Workforce Development Center out on Wards Corner, and then something on the east side. I don't like that word. So, therefore, something on the, the other side of town, such as Five Points, where you're, you're reaching at least 10 different neighborhoods.
And I, I'm going to say, so I don't repeat myself later with the back-to-school event too, when we use the NRHA, and, and I've said this before, they are advertising to, there are people who live throughout the city in Section 8 housing or have vouchers, but there are so many other people that are not part of that system that do not know about these events, and we need to find a way to get to them because of these other federal HUD areas, zones. We need to make sure that we're hitting all people that are in that poverty. And it's, I know we use the NRHA a lot, but we've got to figure out the other side of this too, because not everybody's part of NRHA.
And they're in our communities. They live in our communities.
Another big partner of ours has been the Norfolk View Program as well. No, but you're right, we do need to find ways to reach our seniors and the other members. Great feedback.
Thanks.
A great program.
Quickly, I think this is all great, and Mamie, you need a lot of credit for pushing this, so it's great for you to thank us, but we need to thank you. I'm pretty interested in data, and so I think not only do you need to look at how many people have stayed employed, but I, I think it's also important for you out of that, those numbers, to know how many people are coming from a different job. Because I did hear a lot of that at Waterside, that they had leached off a lot of people from other places. So, we need to, you know, I think that would be helpful for all of us, and for you obviously, in following the data.
Thank you.
Michael, great job. Mayor, thank you. One or two comments. You know, we're six months in, and so feedback is terrific, and the thing will keep getting better, but I got to tell you, these programs live and die by the folks that are driving them, and Michael's doing a fantastic job. We appreciate that.
Good job.
Peter Burke is, as I said earlier, is a Principal Analyst downstairs in the Budget and Strategic Planning Office, and is going to be the staff person for the Lifelong Learning Commission. So, he's going to give you a sense of the direction we're heading in, and we'll have something on your agenda on a couple of meetings to, excuse me, vote on the resolution. Peter?
Yeah. Sorry.
No, I didn't mean that, I just meant this is what you.
Yeah, no, yeah. I've been, I already read the presentation in advance since we get them.
I read the, timeline.
No offense, these are pretty boring now, since we got them in advance. I'm just kidding.
You requested that.
I know.
That's why he's joking.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Pete Bier from the Office of Budget and Strategic Planning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on the planning efforts for the Commission on Lifelong Learning. During the last fall retreat, you identified Commission on Lifelong Learning as a key initiative to support your strategic goals and your council priority of education. Tonight, I'm going to discuss our planning, our thinking about, and our approach to this initiative to date, and lay out some milestones, and lastly, talk about the path moving forward. So, here's where we're headed tonight. And I'd like to begin, talk about the Commission's proposed purpose statement. We started by developing a proposed purpose statement to serve as an overarching unifying declaration for the Commission, and we'll take a focused look at lifelong learning in our city and provide actionable recommendations that we hope will have lasting impact on both resource programming and on our residents' lives. Our goal is to be broadly inclusive and to solicit inputs from a variety of stakeholders across the lifelong learning spectrum and from a variety of perspectives. We started reaching out to representatives to many of the groups you see here to ask them to contribute to the Commission, and as you can see, it's a pretty diverse group of stakeholders. We've also developed some proposed guiding principles to set the tone for the Commission's work and to effectively communicate its priorities. Lifelong learning supports our city's overall resilience strategy by equipping our residents with new knowledge, training, and skills to help solve Norfolk's challenges. If our residents are motivated to learn and have the opportunities to do so in a variety of ways, we will all benefit and become a stronger, more resilient community. Listed here are the proposed guiding principles for the Commission, and again, they are written to be inclusive, acknowledge the variety of backgrounds of our residents, and the collective continuous benefits in lifelong learning. And in developing these principles, we turned to some noteworthy work developed by the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, or UNESCO. UNESCO maintains an Institute for Lifelong Learning, and it produces training, program, and policy materials for cities around the world that are striving to improve learning Taking our planning a step further, we draw upon UNESCO's concept of a learning city to create a proposed commission framework to focus on key attributes, environments, and enablers of lifelong learning in our city. According to UNESCO, a successful learning city does a couple of things really well. It effectively mobilizes its resources in every sector to promote inclusive learning from basic to from basic to higher education. It revitalizes learning in families and communities. It facilitates learning for and in the workplace. A learning city extends the use of modern technology. It enhances quality and excellence in learning, and it fosters a culture of learning throughout life. Our proposed framework reflects these key attributes and serves as a visual representation and a communication tool for the Commission. Our overall approach is to look at learning in a broad sense and consider multiple topics to include early childhood education, which we heard a little bit about tonight, career, technical training, literacy, before and after-school programs, workforce development that we also heard about this evening, adult education and opportunities for the military-connected populations in our city. We will leverage the outstanding work of the Poverty Commission, especially related to workforce development and to early childhood education, and when we develop our findings and recommendations, we'll focus on those that include multiple stakeholders and resources and have the most impact potential for the most residents. Our process will mirror that of the Poverty Commission in many ways. After the organizational phase, we'll transition to work groups around the focus areas, and these groups will research, discuss, and present findings to the entire Commission, and they'll work to identify cross-cutting themes and recommendations. Towards the latter part of the one-year effort, the Commission will agree upon consensus priorities and recommendations, and the final deliverables will be a written report as well as a presentation to you in the summer of 2018. As we begin our detailed planning, we identified some key milestones to look forward to over the next year related to the Commission. We'll plan for our first organizational meeting in August and then get to work. We'll hold focus group meetings and develop preliminary findings and recommendations in the fall and into the winter, and then we will plan for two town hall meetings in the winter and the spring to allow residents to hear about the ongoing work and to provide feedback. Following the delivery of the written report and the presentation to council, the Commission will formally sunset in August of 2018. So, moving forward, we have a couple of things to do to get this kicked off. We'll coordinate with the City Manager's Office and with the Clerk's Office to draft and finalize the formal resolution establishing the Commission, and this resolution will designate by name the council chair or chairs and the commissioners. We'll also work to scope the Commission's work appropriately to ensure that it meets your expectations and can deliver on the timeline presented. We anticipate being able to address three to four focus areas, and we welcome a discussion and your inputs on that. And we will also develop a roadmap to iron out the scheduling and the work assignments and overall logistics. So, stay tuned. You all know Suzanne Purrier well, and she has graciously agreed to serve as the Commission facilitator for this. On the city staff side, I'll be coordinating many aspects of the Commission, so you'll undoubtedly be hearing from me again, and I look forward to working with each of you on this. And last, but certainly not least, I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Katherine Schneider. Can you stand up? You met her briefly at the Nell Executive Intern introduction, but she is working this summer in the City Manager's Office and is going to be assisting with getting the Commission up and running. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Let's know how it works out.
I appreciate your time. This is obviously still in the formative stages, and welcome the discussion on how best to move forward and what your priorities are, and look forward to supporting the Commission on Lifeline Learning. Thank you.
All right. So, Peter, terrific stuff, and obviously, a lot of fun work, but I think a good roadmap forward, and a year from now, we'll have a good product for you.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you volunteer for the council?
We have a few volunteers. I guess we'll.
So, yeah, so we've gone through a list of names, and we've talked through with the mayor, and candidly, now we're talking to those folks, and before we put them out publicly, we want to make sure they're willing to serve. So, we're talking to some folks, and we're going to, so part of the resolution that you all would adopt would include those names, and you'll see them, obviously, before, well, before we bring that to you.
Can we send recommendations to you as well? It will go to you.
Fine. All right. Peter, thank you, bud. Appreciate it very much.
And I'm interested in chairing that if there's another council member that wants to do it.
I thought you might.
Yeah, I just wanted, I didn't know.
Are you asking to be appointed as chair?
What?
Are you asking?
Yes. I'm volunteering.
You're volunteering.
I didn't know if, I know Terry had said she wanted to do it to you, too. I mean, any, as soon as the Poverty Commission, that council members could show up at any time. So, it'll be announced, it'll be announced publicly.
All right. So, Steve Hawkes is going to give you an update on the Ready to Thrive program as we get ready to school. Hadn't even ended, we're talking about back-to-school.
Steve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Usually, when I'm the last one on the agenda, Doug tells me, "Steve, you got to be under five minutes." We're a little ahead tonight, so I get to preach. We'll be okay. We are talking about the Ready to Thrive program. Under the guidance of then-new Mayor Alexander, the Ready to Thrive Initiative was launched in August of 2016. We developed several goals for that program. One was to promote healthy growth, development, and success of children, to identify and remove barriers to children's learning, and to support and empower parents to navigate and connect to community resources and systems of care. Let's talk about several of the components of the Ready to Thrive Initiative. The first initiative was Back to School Fest in 2016. We're going to review that a little bit. We're going to talk about this year's event, which is Back to School Fest 2017. And then, we'll spend more time talking about a cohort of 50 children that were identified by Norfolk Public Schools for more intensive efforts. We'll talk about successes that we obtained. We'll talk about the obstacles to success, and then we'll talk about the ability to replicate this particular initiative. Let's talk first about Back to School Fest 2016, and several of you were there. We appreciated all of the support. During that effort, we had 1,343 people in attendance. Of those, 982 were children. It was a collaborative event. It was manned by, primarily by Norfolk employees, but they were volunteers in that effort. They came out to staff that. We did have some schedule adjustments in there. We also had a number of vendors that came to talk about the services that they could provide. Folks received backpacks, school supplies. There were recreational activities. The floors, this was held at Norfolk Scope, and the floor of Norfolk Scope had bounce houses and a variety of things that were set up by recreation parks and open spaces, folks. We did relent and have a hot dog lunch that was talk about eating healthy, but we wanted to make sure folks came out. We had access to the community resources. There was a room that many of you saw that was full of vendors that were offering services, some giveaways. We also had health services. Dr. Lindsay reached out to the community, and so we were doing immunizations. We did some basic screening. The resource, we had to have people sign up when they first got there because of the demand for that. All in all, this was a very successful event for us. So, we want to build on success, and that leads us to Back to School Fest 2017. We've begun the planning for this effort. We have a committee. A lot of the folks that were here last year that were guiding this are gone, but we pulled together the folks that were involved and some of the others to try to begin the planning. So, we're looking at doing this event once again at Scope. With Scope, you have a larger area. You don't have to worry about the weather. That was a consideration when we were first looking at this. We had talked about doing this on an athletic field. However, we would be dependent upon the weather. So, Norfolk Scope worked. It allowed for a flow of individuals. It was a hot day. We had air conditioning on the inside. We want to use the same basic date, so we're looking at Saturday, August 26. This is the Saturday before Labor Day. So, once again, it's not on the holiday weekend, but it's that week before so that we can get folks out and begin to get them ready for when kids get back to school. Now, Councilman Schmiegel, I did hear the discussion, and so we are talking about public housing residents, Section 8 residents, and other specialized populations, excuse me. There's logistical reasons for this, and I don't want to say this in a negative way, but when we began planning for 2016, this was approximately a month after Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority had their event, where they basically had to call the event off because of the crowd that showed up. We were very scared of that, because this is not a city-funded event. There is not a line item in there. We had to obtain donations for many of the supplies, such as the school supplies and the book bags that you saw. We were very worried about, we did not want to run out, we did not want to have a volume that would overrun us. We did talk about, okay, so what if we use as a guide for who to invite our SNAP or food stamp population? That's 25,000 households in Norfolk. If you figure that's two and a half persons per household, you were looking at somewhere around sixty, potential for 60,000 individuals. The event was a success, but the numbers were right around 1,300. So, that's why we're recommending the limited population.
And I understand that, and I'm not, I think maybe you're misunderstanding. You know, Norfolk Public Schools, free and reduced lunch population is 67%. And the populations that you're targeting here are at schools that have 100% free and reduced lunch populations. And I'm just being very honest, a lot of the kids that are at those schools or are part of this already have access to other resources, where you have kids at other schools around the city that don't get the same access to some of the free items and things that are being given or done here. Ocean View Elementary School is over 70% free and reduced lunch, and there's a lot of kids who live in apartment buildings in Willoughby that are on poverty level and are not part of Section 8 housing or public housing recipients. And so, I don't see what it would hurt that if you know that Ocean View Elementary is going to do a back-to-school flyer, a mailer, why they couldn't put a flyer in there advertising this event and trying to reach some of those kids that are in other parts of the city that are not recognized as part of this. I mean, it just, to me, we keep on focusing on the same parts of the city, but we're dealing with poverty all around the city. And it makes me upset sometimes when I hear that. Then maybe we need to not focus as much this year on that, some populations on this side, and try to reach out to other parts. East Ocean View has a federal HUD area. Go talk to the Little Creek Elementary School Principal and hear what she has to deal with every day with poverty in her school. And so, we're ignoring populations in other parts of the city because it's easier to just go ahead and target areas where we know it's stronger, but we need to make sure that if we're, if this is going to be a citywide thing, that we are focusing on as many of the kids as we can. And I understand there's like 25,000 children, but then how about we do a heavier focus on other parts? It just, and I actually wish Councilman Riddick was here, sometimes, too, you can end up enabling populations if you continue doing the same thing over and over for free and expectations. So, our, you know, I want to make sure that this is being spread out and we're having equal access for children in other parts of the city that have, are dealing with poverty, black, white, I don't care what color they are. It's poverty. Poverty doesn't look at color. And I'm concerned that children in other parts of the city do not get the same access to these resources because we always go to the same groups. And I'm sorry, and I said this last year, I was upset about the way that this was being advertised and done, and I mean, my school is 46% free and reduced population, and I have kids that need services, and we're not invited to this event at all. They did not get an invitation. They didn't know anything about it because they didn't live in public housing. And I think we're just targeting one area, but we need to make sure that we're looking at everybody.
So, we'll need some guidance from you all, because I think part of what Steve's going to say in a minute is, given the resources we've got and what we budgeted for, we're at a level that we can sustain, but we can't sustain something bigger. So, I think if listening to you to meet your need, we'd have to shift. Now, what if Steve did not, Steve's nodding, and then sort of say, all right, we've done something here, now we're going to move somewhere else. And so, we'll just, we'll need some, this is our recommendation, but we'll need some guidance from you all if you want us to go in a different direction.
And I think that we're willing to provide the guidance that's necessary, because being in the school, we see the children all the time, and they live in everyday, normal neighborhoods. They go to school, but for many of our children, they don't have the resources that are available to them, and they are also below the poverty line, and it's much needed to provide the resources to them as well, especially with Norfolk's high population of poverty. And, Mr. Hawkes, when we say other specialized population, what are we referring to there?
We had other populations, special needs populations and what have you, that were identified, that while we did not advertise it as we did within the public housing communities and did a mailer to the Section 8 recipients, we did have other individualized populations that we became aware of. They were much smaller in number that we did reach out to. And quite frankly, a number of people did show up who were not affiliated with any of these, and we did not turn anybody away.
I'm sure that if you contacted every elementary school in the city and asked them to give you 10 names to invite or give them 10 flyers and say, please, that we could do it. We could identify very quickly 10 kids.
That's what I was going to suggest, that just spread it out. And obviously, as Tommy's talking about, if you've got kind of an overlap of services that perhaps the guidance counselors or the principals would know those families that have fallen through the gaps and haven't received services in the past and need access. Might be we did. Identify a smaller group, but I know it's hard, it'd be hard for principals to limit it to a certain amount. I mean, we're still talking about limiting.
Okay. That's a great suggestion. We'll be glad to take it back to the steering committee and revise this portion of it. So, thank you. And I would also encourage, as we are identifying the participants, please help us also with identifying the resources, because once again, this is a voluntary effort. This was not something that we had a line item to go out and purchase, so we'd appreciate that help as well.
We could do that.
Thank you so much. Okay, so, that's Back to School Fest. The other effort was a cohort of 50 children that were identified by Norfolk Public Schools. We did have successes with this. One of the successes was a comprehensive assessment form was developed. There was coordination between a number of city departments. The City Manager's Office, Community Services Board, Human Services, libraries, public schools, neighborhood development, NRHA, Reposts, and the Virginia Department of Health. So, it wasn't just city departments. There was an effort that involved a lot of our community partners as well. We did not even have a starting point, so we developed really what turned out to be quite a comprehensive assessment form to get in and meet with the families in order to determine what their needs. I'll talk about some of the barriers that we found through that assessment. But at the end of the day, after we did have contact with families and worked intensely with them, and this was intensive work with these families, we did have self-reported family improvement and ability to manage problems. We had an increase in access to goods and services. We had an increase in formal supports and improvements in the positive family relationships with the children. So, we worked with the families to try to show them different ways that they could work with and address individual problems within the family. with and address individual problems within the family. Among the strengths that we tried to capitalize on using protective factors, we tried to increase the parents' ability to cope and manage stress and difficulties. And in my 44 years in human services, that's the one common that I have found over those years, is what, what sets a person apart from long-term dependency on the system is coping skill. Because everybody has a child that gets sick. You either go to work or you don't. And that, that is a coping skill. Increasing knowledge of parenting and child development, helping, we've talked a lot today about minus nine to five, helping with child development, showing folks what can you do in the early stages of life, identifying and accessing services and supports for the family, and improving the parent and child relationships. So, these were some of the positives that came out of this. We did not hit all 50 of what was originally identified to us. Some families were very difficult to contact. From the time we were given their contact information and we made multiple attempts to contact them, we couldn't find them. We had other families that, at different stages, declined services. We had some that said, no, we will not sit and do the assessment form with you. We had others that went through the assessment form and they said, that's enough. We're not going forward. We did find a number of barriers within the families through that assessment. So, I think altogether, we have made contact with 37 of the 50 that we were originally given that have decided to continue on. Among the problems that we found, poverty and financial hardship, parental unemployment or underemployment, low parental academic achievement, housing instability, homelessness, food insecurity, lack of transportation, all of the things that you see in the schools every day. We were finding what the root causes were that, with what you were working with when the child shows up at school. Domestic violence, chronic mental illness, child abuse and neglect, neighborhood violence and crime, and unhealthy, unsafe housing environments, lack of awareness of community services that could be accessed. Do we have the ability to replicate this? Yes, but it is not sustainable as it is currently structured. Staff resources do not exist for this program. This program has been carried out by senior-level managers within departments such as the Community Services Board and the Department of Human Services. What we have found is, we estimate that one staff member would be needed to assess and case-manage every 50 referrals because they're going to be different levels. Some will be more or less intense than others. Criteria needed to be developed to identify the students that would be referred. What we heard from the schools, they told us, well, we didn't know. We were just told to give us 50 names from certain schools. They didn't know what it was that we were looking for. And quite honestly, when we asked for the names, we didn't have the assessment developed. So, it was a good faith effort by the schools to provide names to us, but as a result of no criteria being out there, we did not know, we that were working with the families did not know the reasons why schools had chosen those particular students. And this goes back to what Mr. Smigle was saying a little while ago about every principal can probably tell you a number of their students that need some type of guidance or extra hand or showing something in their behavior or academic achievement that would say there's something not exactly right in the home that where help might be needed. So, once again, that resource does not currently exist. This is what we feel would be needed if we tried to replicate this particular effort. And with that, I'll be glad to take any questions or comments.
So, Mr. Hawks, you mentioned that some families declined services.
Yes, ma'am.
And you, one of the reasons why you mentioned that was because of the form.
After going through the form, and I'm guessing, based on the comments I heard from the folks who were administering the form, after folks saw how invasive the questions were, because we were really getting into what's going on in this home, and there were some people that, after going through that process, said, no, no further.
So, we need to consider taking a look at the form?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And re-bam the form. And so, have we been able to track, you said, some of the information that was provided? Contact information was not up to date. So, question, where did you, where did you receive your contact information?
From the schools.
Okay. So, we can answer that. We're laughing because often, very often, we go through this, that parents will change their telephone numbers and immediate contact information, possibly on a monthly basis. And what the school systems often try, the schools often try to do is to send home a form that has simple question requesting updated information. For those teachers and principals and staff who are really creative, they dangle something to get those forms back so that we can keep it on file. We have the understanding that at some level, in my experience, I may have gone through at least 10 telephone numbers and not be able to make an initial contact with a parent. So...
For some reason, grandma's phone numbers always work though.
Yes.
You can always get to grandma. Grandma doesn't change her number as much as mom.
No. And in many cases, the children do not know their phone number because it changes on a regular basis. So, they, they don't know. So, with that said, Mr. Hawks, Mr. Smigle, and I can review this and give some suggestions, right?
Yeah. Yes, I think what we're telling you really is, is Back to School Fest, we're hearing you on the change, and we'll work to get the geography better, but we've got a limited number. Don't understand that.
Sadly, I think transportation's going to be...
Yeah, I hear you.
Because that was obviously one of the strong points, so they're ready to, you know, the other one, because people are just walking to the event.
Will you buy time?
But we can do that.
Norfolk Public Schools is a partnership. They've got buses.
Yeah. I'm just saying, something needs to be announced.
So, I think our plan would be to let the steering committee try to take your feedback, and then we'll figure out sort of the response to that on the Back to School Fest.
So, I guess my question would be, who is doing this work now if this past year, if we need a staff member for next year?
So, this was a bit of an ad hoc initiative. You know, there was really, I think part of what we're saying to you is, it was, I think it had success. I think there were a lot of obstacles. We were trying to stand up something that hadn't been done before, and we don't have the resources to continue it and to frankly impact what ended up being 30, 37 families.
And I guess what I'm saying is, do you think, in your opinion, that this is an appropriate use of resources? In other words, does this have the opportunity to make a difference? And I, and I hope it would, but, you know, that it's worth it.
But for me, in an environment of limited resources, I think you're getting, you're touching a lot of families with the Back to School Fest in a meaning, somewhat meaningful way. This is a difficult one to sustain. And it's not to say that you won't, don't love impacting 30 families, but the reality is, the work that's been put in, the return isn't there.
Okay. So...
Well, the back, for the Back to School event too, and we've had some very minor conversations about this, but, you know, we have all these companies that are coming in, and we have done a great job courting them with incentives. And I think that as part of those continued conversations, when we offer these incentives, whether it's ADP or Movement Mortgage, that there should almost be a caveat that if you get this incentive, then we expect for you to participate in one of these events that we do here as a city and give back to the community. You know, ADP is a huge employer right now, and they've, they've done really well in the school system with junior achievement and volunteering with that. But I'm sure that if, you know, a company like that had asked for each of their employees to bring one school supply item, you know, to work, you could probably collect enough donations to stock a whole school, you know, with that. But we've got to start not always being the ones that have to give everything and start asking these groups to be part of that. And I know some of them, naturally, they have that charity in their organization. But I think there's, there's good opportunities here to have these types of things. I mean, Simon Outlet Mall's going to be opening up soon. We should be reaching out to them and ask them to have school supply bins, donation bins around, so when they're doing their grand opening, people can buy things and donate it into that so that you can have a stock ready for this event in August.
Well, maybe it's...
But you need somebody to coordinate it, Doug, and I understand that, but you've got lots of interns that are probably just waiting to impress us with this kind of stuff.
Mr. Bendel.
I'll fill you a pressure cap.
How many book bags did Centura donate? 1,500? 1,500?
And we do still have, we're in Greg's office. How many, Greg?
About 500 left.
We still have about 500 from last year that we're holding for this year's event.
Okay. Good.
All right, Mayor, I would like you all to consider this a gift of time from the City Manager's Office.
Thank you.
Can't we start upstairs again? I'm sure nobody would care.
We can get Doug's review done in 30 minutes.
I have something for Dr. Whibley. I want to present.
Uh-oh. This could be problematic. Can we turn off the cameras?
No, no. No, no cameras turn off.
For the high school.
Hope this doesn't, I hope this doesn't have anything to do with billboards. Oh, God. It's really lovely. I got an email today that said the billboard was up, so I go into hiding for a little bit.
Just wear a mustache.
Yeah.
I mean, Terry, you could, you know, if you decide to run again, that's free advertising for you.
I like the sound of that.
Yeah. Well, keep that in mind. Thank you so much.
Doug, we have a few minutes for council concerns. I mean, if, I know, if not, we will, yeah. All right, we'll see you later.
But I have not listened.
Come on, I've got a couple of announcements.
Council concerns?
Hold it, Terry.
Oh, we don't?
A couple of announcements. We will conduct interviews of the candidates for the City Manager on June 27th. All right, so that's my announcement.
I would be.
Mr. Clerk, what time? The time will be noon. The place will, is to be determined, to be announced. I have not decided that yet.
Don't we have the groundbreaking for, I mean, the ribbon cutting for Simon on the 27th?
29.
It's 29, okay. I knew it was around that time.
That's the only announcement I have. Well, Mr. Manager, you have some good news. The government, the Government Financial Officers Association has awarded Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to the City of Norfolk for its FY 2016 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Christine won't tell you, but I'll tell you, that is 31 years in a row, right?
31 years.
Fantastic. Congratulations.
All right. All right, so we'll see you at 7:00.
7:00.
So, we can't do council concerns or...
We can't.
Well, I think part of, we did them to me, certainly welcome, obviously, but they did it last week, so I think that's why they got theirs.
My comments apparently made David Root leave, so I'm not going to say anything anymore.
Yeah, I don't think this will be offended.
Okay, go ahead, Terry.
Yeah, we'll try. I, and maybe you guys talked about this, but I was reminded of this. Last night, I attended the initial showing of From the Ashes, which is about the coal industry in the United States and its effects on employment, and it has a multi varied topic. But one of the issues in that was talking about cities that have taken on resilience and to become self-sustainable and to have renewable energy. So, I was very proud that Kenny had announced that as a city, we were going to not be dissuaded by our president dropping out of the Paris Accord and that to join other cities that have taken this on. So, I'd just like to talk about that at some time, you know, for how we're going to do that and what specifically we're going to work toward. Couple of years ago, I brought this up about how San Diego had taken on that, that we were, they were going to use only sustainable energy. And I just think it would be very interesting for us to talk about, I know obviously we do it when it comes to flooding, but there are so many other issues that we could talk about and maybe set some benchmarks and some timelines. I know it's a big issue. You're probably not prepared to do that in the next 40 minutes, but if anybody else has an interest in that, I would do.
No, I would, I do, but I would also like to get an update eventually on the study that's supposed to be being done by ODU with the coal ash.
Well, I've asked Doug about that because we have now had that, it's now we've gotten to the timeline on it. And so, he's going to present that in the next month. We're going to have that from DEQ because I had reminded of that. But, you know, very frankly, we're going to need to recognize that there hasn't been any coal brought through by trains for probably nine months almost. It's renewed now, so the numbers may be a little skewed by that. So, we're going to need to figure out what to do with that.
So, my quick reaction would be to have the first conversation in the context of the things that we do have going on because there is a lot happening. And the one thing that has, that we're not struggling with, but we're balancing is as we theme these work sessions around your big three priorities of housing, education, and safety, every now and then, we're having to sort of shoehorn things in to make sure that you get, you get time to talk about them. So, that first Tuesday meeting, the workshop, you know, we don't theme those. And we could perhaps take the first one or two of those after your break and devoted to resilience and this conversation about the Paris Accords and whatnot. Christine Morrison and her folks are more prepared to guide you through that conversation.
There's some pretty exciting things done by cities. One of them frankly was a city in Texas, and they talked about this would probably be the last city you would expect. Very conservative area, and yet they've done some really remarkable things on working their way towards self-sustainability. And 70% of our pollution comes from cities. So, we need to take that lead, I think, and it'd be pretty exciting for us to do so, I think. Okay. Sorry, I think we don't really have...
Great stuff.
Great.
Okay. All right. See you upstairs.